For the record, I am Jay Jermaine Bay. I'm the Chief Causey, which means Judge, for Alodeo and Moore's Pradium ante Colorado. The acronym is AMPAC. Today, I will be talking about the word escheat. The real question is, how did the Moors lose the land? And for a point of reference, today's class is Part 1 of a civics class on behalf of Moore's Science Civics. Alright, so if anybody has any questions, please feel free to ask any questions. But today's subject matter is under civics class Part 1, "How Did the Moors Lose the Land?" And the answer is escheat and hypothecation, alright? So today, we're gonna break down the Moore's Science Civics, or what these words mean in terms of how that the colonists, i.e. the pilgrims, settlers, people who have applied the name American, or the term white people to themselves, how did they legally steal the land from the Moors? We're talking about that today. So, first thing we're gonna do is, we're gonna get into the definition of escheat. So according to Black's Law Dictionary, which is Henry Campbell Black's dictionary, 4th edition, we're gonna look up the word escheat. So therefore, for those of you who don't have a Black's Law Dictionary, 4th edition, you can always use a PDF version, and if you want to email me at info@ampacgov.org, I'd be more than happy to send you the PDF version, that way you'll always have a copy of it, alright? So today, we're working out the 4th edition, Henry Campbell Black's dictionary. So today, we're gonna go over the definition of escheat, as well as some different definitions of other words that apply to the word escheat. That way, you can see the law and history of what took place as to how the Moors lost their land legally, alright? So first things first, we're gonna look up the definition of escheat. So, so the definition of escheat. Now, I know sometimes it's difficult to see the monitor because of the reflection of the light, but for those who are watching at home, look up the definition of escheat in your Black's Law Dictionary 4th edition, alright? Like I said, you can always email me, and I'll send you a copy of the 3rd, 4th, and 5th edition PDF version, alright? So today, we're talking about the definition of escheat. We'll break down the Moore's Science of that word, so you can understand exactly what happened based upon a legal theft, legal theft, okay? So first things first, let's read the definition of escheat. Understanding that Moors must learn how to read, read means to comprehend, forensics. It means to use discernment. It means to really break down the substance of each word, and understand what is really being presented to you based upon the definition, alright?
Does he need to put that away?
So let's go over the definition of escheat, okay? Alright, so we can have the matriarchs read the definition of escheat. That would be great, because everything we do is about the mothers. Once we rise up the mothers, the matriarch council, that's the legislators who create the law in the first place, then we will start to now bring back humanity of the people. So let's let the matriarchs read it, because anytime you're reading, you're reading the law of mothers, alright? So let's go for it.
Escheat, infidel law. Escheat is an obstruction of the course of descent and subsequent determination of the tenure by some unforeseen contingency, in which case the land naturally results back by a kind of reversion to the original grantor, or lord of the fee.
Stop. So let's really examine the first thing that they're presenting to us. So Moors have to get back into forensics of words and what's really being presented. So let's break it down. So first things first, under escheat, it's infidel law. So we know it's a feudal law terminology. So first thing we do as Moors is, was the definition of feudal law, because it's setting forth the understanding of what you're about to read. Escheat may be the word, but now they just gave you the title, really, of what you're about to read. So now, we have to look up the definition of feudal law. When you look up the definition of feudal law, according to Henry Campbell Black's 4th edition, it's on page 749. So we gotta mothers read the definition of feudal law.
Pertaining to feuds or fees, relating to or growing out of the feudal system or feudal law, having the quality of a feud as distinguished from a lodeo.
So let's stop right there. That just unpacked the entire secret that they've been keeping under feudal law. So first things first, let's understand the word feudal. Feudal is a compound word. The compound word is few and then owl. So separate few from owl, you get a feud, so who are they feuding with? The colonists are feuding with who? The owls, A-L. So you got the five families, right? You got the owls, Ali's, Bay's, Day's, and you got the Il's, E-L. So they're feuding with the owls. So who's feuding with the owls? You must name the parties. United States of America citizens, the administrators, are feuding with the Moors, okay? Feudal law is a feud with Moors, that's what the owl represents, okay? So therefore, in the definition of feudal law, it tells you immediately, it's the what opposite or contrary of a lodeo. Isn't that what it says? Okay, now let's look up a lodeo, so we can understand the contrast of colonists are saying, well, who's these a lodeo people? Let's look up the definition of a lodeo. You can find the definition of a lodeo on page 100 in the 4th edition Black's Law Dictionary. Let me know when you have it.
Okay.
So just a moment, so for the purpose of, whatever. Alright, so under the definition of a lodeo, we have the matriarchs read, please?
Read. Not holden of any lord or superior, owned without obligation of vassalage or fealty, the opposite of feudal.
So therefore, feudal law, the opposite of feudal law, is a lodeo. The opposite of lodeo is feudal, feudal. So therefore, there's a feud going on, because people who call themselves a lodeo have no superior over them. So therefore, Moors are lodeo. Colonists, now who go by under the nom de guerre of American, or go under the nom de guerre of white person, those persons who call themselves colonists are federalists, feudalists, settlers, pilgrims, they are the ones who created feudal law. That way, they can subjugate, undermine the Moors, the owls. Got it so far? Excellent. So far, we're already setting forth to get a basic understanding and overstanding of what escheat is starting to present to us, is a feud going on. And what is the feud between the colonists and the Moors? Got it? Alright, let's continue with the reading of the definition of escheat, now that we know what feudal law is. That's how Moors have to always examine things, look up words. Not just look up the words, get a comprehension of the word. Let's continue on the definition of feudal law.
It is the casual descent in the nature of forfeiture of lands and tenements within his manor to a lord either on failure of issue of the tenant dying, seized, or on account of the felony of such tenant.
Alright, so what did we just read there under feudal law? Someone died. So therefore, when someone died, well, who died? The Moor died. Well, how did the Moor die? The definition of that is called hypothecation. We'll look that up shortly, but not right now. But hypothecation means that through the power of the pen, the colonists made the Moors disappear by their decree through their congress, okay? That goes back to the Naturalization Act of 1870 and the Act of Congress 1871. Both of those were backed up by the 14th Amendment, person all caps, making the Moors disappear on paper, okay? So therefore, what's happening in that quick linear entry that you've read thus far, the Moors on paper die. Okay, so who took over their property? The colonists who are applying the definition of American to themselves. So therefore, you must understand law and history under the definition of American. Now, Noah Webster's dictionary, 1828, says the American is the copper-colored people, the Aboriginals of the land of America. Now, that term, that word is being applied to the descendants of Europeans, connotative, because Europeans are not even Europeans. They're Albion's, chiefly British. That's what Albion means, chiefly British. That's their real name or nom de guerre that they went under, okay? So let's continue with the understanding of feudal law. Let's continue the reading, please.
Also, the land or fee itself, which thus fell back to the lord. Such lands were called excedentes, or terra excedentialis.
Okay, so those two words are Latin. The first word means that the land resorted back to a feudal lord, i.e. the colonists took the land because they're saying the Moors are dead. But also, the second word, which is, could you repeat that again for his mother?
Excedente se.
Exactly, stop right there. Means that both parties have done something wrong to violate a contract. So therefore, that word means, the Latin word, means both parties are at fault. However, the colonists who wrote these definitions are saying they're the competent party, so therefore, they're acting as the trustees or the opers, managers over the Moorish estate, because the Moors have been now deemed dead through hypothecation, i.e. dead at sea. They're saying their vassal, their vessel, their blood vessel, blood vessel, that they no longer have blood in them because they're dead. That they have now capsized because their ship, their vessel capsized and everyone perished. That's the reason why you go to places like Louisiana, and they call them parishes, or you go to some churches, they call it a parish, because parish means the people perished. So therefore, the colonists are saying the Moors perished. The Moors died. So now, they have become the trustees, the opers, the managers over your vast estate of northwest Mexum, also known as the true Moroccan Empire. Go ahead, ask a question, please, mother.
So basically, they killed the Moors by the pen?
By the pen, through escheat. We're gonna continuously learn, they're gonna expose the fraud in the definition of escheat in just a moment. But the first thing they told you is feudal law, which is colonists made someone die. Well, how did they die? Through the power of a pen, through their congress, alright? So let's continue the reading. Mother?
In American law, escheat signifies a reversion of property to the state in consequence of a want of any individual competence to inherit. The state is deemed to occupy the place and hold the rights of the feudal lord.
Stop right there. So the state has deemed themselves to be the competent ones to take over the Moorish estate. Why? Because they're saying the Moors are dead at sea. Because on the Abbotian maritime law, which is the world, they're trying to say like Noah's Ark, the whole world is underwater. So under Abbotian maritime law, they're claiming to be Noah, and that everybody else is perished. They get to make claims to everything, because they're saying that all the Moors are dead on paper. So therefore, the state, the state of Colorado, or the state of any of the several 50 corporations known as the states, all caps, are acting as opers, managers on behalf of the United States of America, not to be confused with the U.S. dot United States. So therefore, they're acting as if they're managing your estate, almost like a power returning while you're dead, or you're in a coma, laying in the bed, in a shallow grave, because you suffer from psychosis, because you think you're black. So black people are dead in the eyes of the law, because they know such thing as black people. So they deem the Moors, label them Moors, label the Moors as being black, negro, colored, African-American, minority, negro, N-word, niggers, nigga, every name but Moor. Molatto, Indian, et cetera. These are all dead names through hypothecation. It says, anybody call themselves this name, those people are now dead in the eyes of the law, as well as Moors are dead in the eyes of the law, because there is no such thing as black people. That's not a people. People are named after the land, and land is made after people. There's 54 countries in Africa, and none of them are named black. 35 countries in America, the continent, and none of them are named black or brown. There's 50 countries in Europe, none of them are named black or white. There's approximately 45 countries in Asia, none of those people there are named yellow, no country. So therefore, these are all what you call nom de guerres. So nom de guerre means that it's a fake name given to people, but it's not your real name. Let me give you an example. If you ever watched the movie Roots, Kunti Kinte, which was his appellation, the slave master is trying to force him to accept the name Toby. Toby will be called a nom de guerre, no different than black, negro, African-American, minority, or color, et cetera. So the original name of Kunti Kinte is Kunti Kinte. They had to get him to accept a brand, which was Toby. Toby is synonymous with the word black, negro, African-American, colored, minority, et cetera. You must understand that. And because of that, the colonists get to continuously say the Moors are dead, because you're not calling yourself a Moor. You must understand the word Moor is in the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, 1786, fully ratified in the year 1787, between who? United States of America citizens and Moors. So if you're not calling yourself by one of the parties, a Moor or United States citizen, then you're not affiliated with the contract, you have no protections. So therefore, they have to get everybody to call themselves Toby, i.e. black, negro, colored, African-American, minority, et cetera, which takes you out of the contract. As soon as you're out of the contract, you can enforce a contract. This is all about contract law as it relates to your estate. As long as they call themselves United States citizens, they're in the contract. But yet, they're not in the contract. Why do I say that? Because United States is not a party to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. Only United States of America citizens, not to be confused with United States citizens. So who's a party of the contract to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, 1786? United States of America citizens and Moors. So they have, they, meaning these people who call themselves the American and white people, have written themselves outside the contract as well by going by the term of white. They've written themselves outside of the contract as well by calling themselves the American. They're not American, they're still Europeans, connotative. They must go by the contract name, United States of America citizens. Not U.S., not U.S. with no dots, and not anything other than United States of America citizens. That must be understood, the parties must be known. So in the definition of feudal, excuse me, of escheat, you're really starting to break down the substance of what you must understand and what took place with the Moors losing their land. The Moors start calling themselves black. The United States of America citizens start calling themselves white. Both are acting outside of the contract. And when you're outside, outside of the contract, that means you're outside of the law, because the contract, the treaty is the law. Anything outside of that is outside the law, that means that both parties are outlaws. Both parties are guilty. So in that Latin definition, both parties are guilty for being outside the law, because of what, under what you call tacit acquiescence. The Moors have consented to be called black people. They're not black, they're Moors. That's a fact. Let's continue with the reading for the definition of escheat.
Escheat at feudal law was the right of the lord of a fee to re-enter upon the same when it became vacant by the extinction of the blood of the tenant. This extinction might either be per defectum, sanquinis, or else per delectum, tenentis, where the course of descent was broken up by the corruption of the blood of the tenant. As a fee might beholden either by the, either of the crown or from some inferior lord. Escheat was not always to the crown. The word escheat in this country at the present time merely indicates the preferable right of the state to an estate left vacant, and without there being anyone in existence able to make claim thereto.
So what did we just learn from that? Let's really examine it, you in Moore's Science Civics, by reading and comprehending. What did they just say? That the bloodline has been corrupted, that the Moors are extinct. If you watch the History Channel, they're always talking about indigenous people just disappeared. How can people disappear? You mean they disappeared on paper? Which is escheat and hypothecation. We'll get to definition of hypothecation in a little while. So writing in there, they said that the estate, E-state, estate, became vacant. And who moved in to take claim to it? Under possession, not ownership. Possession is way different than ownership. You can have ownership and possession. This says I have ownership and possession. But if I pick up somebody else's affairs, I just got possession, but I don't have ownership, you understand? So the colonists have possession over vacated land, because they said all the Moors perished and disappeared, so they just moved right on in and gave it to the state. You must understand, the state are imposters. They're the opers, the trustees, the managers over your vast estate with an E. Why? Because Moors disappeared on paper through passive acquiescence and tacit, tacit, T-A-C-I-T, acquiescence. You admitted and concurred and consented to disappear, because you don't go by the name of Moor, you go by the brand of black. That's how deep this is. They put it right in front of your face, but you must comprehend exactly what they're saying. But if you never knew you was a Moor, and they got you thinking you came from some other land that came over here on a slave ship, you're not even considering this land to be yours. So you're fighting to go back to Africa, even though you don't know a dang thing about Africa, because if you know about Africa, you know that all 54 countries, none of them named black. Never happened, never will be. So let's continue on. So that's the definition of escheat. That's the first thing they did, they had to corrupt your bloodline to say that you're extinct, that you perished. You perished at sea under Abbotian maritime law, because the whole world had drowned. That's Noah's Ark story.
That is the Noah's Ark story.
That is correct. All Moors drowned at sea. Got it? Okay, so when Toshary Bay tells us, when you read King James Bible or Version, it came out of 1611, it's an anthropomorphic story. Story about who?
The Moors.
That's the truth. How do I know? They just told you on the definition of escheat, that the bloodline was corrupted, that the vessel, blood vessel, vessel, ship, vassal, blood vessel, capsized, perished, died, vacated, abandoned ship. What ship? All the ships capsized, because the world flooded. Everybody died. On paper, the vessel, the blood vessel, the body, died. Blood vessels, they call ships vessels, vassals, vassals, vessels, blood vessels. Abbotian maritime law, all human beings on earth have been now deemed as ships. Your house, your domicile is now a ship in the water, in the sea. Your body is a ship floating around on the roadway. Everything is an ocean now, under Abbotian maritime law. Ask a question, please.
So when they talk about the two, two of each gender of animals going into Noah's Ark, they're talking about the Albions taking over escheating the Moors.
So you must understand Noah's Ark said two of a kind.
Right.
Two of a kind means birds of a feather.
Right.
See, the story wasn't about bringing animals on the ship. It was about bringing those who consented to that consciousness of taking over the Moorish land.
Right.
So they only brought those on board who were down through what's called Uno Sanctum Policies, Secret Treaty of Verona, doctrines of discovery, et cetera. Those who were down with the overthrow of the Republic of all the Moorish land. So therefore, the story continued with Noah's Ark. After 40 days and 40 nights, understanding four plus zero equals four, right? That's their four quadrants of a circle, okay? Four quadrants, four seasons, that's a circle. Noah sent out a dove. Why they sent out a dove? Because the dove was looking for land. So he sent out the dove, the dove will come back with nothing. He sent out the dove again, all of a sudden, the dove came back with an olive branch. What does the olive branch represent, as well as the dove? It represents peace. The dove represents a messenger. They use dove to carry a pigeon, dove, messenger. So the dove brought back an olive branch. The olive branch represents the treaties. A treaty means how you treat another nation. So the dove was sent out as a, as a means of extending treaty relations. So then Noah gets the olive branch, and he sends the dove out again. The dove does not come back again. That's when Noah knew that supposedly the water had now recited, and it was safe to go on to land. The firming. What does that mean? The treaty had been signed and agreed to by who? Mother Nature. But it's an anthropomorphic story saying that the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, all the treaties that the colonists have with Moors around the world comes through a political document called a treaty of peace and friendship. Amity then commerce, because amity means friendship, tranquility. That's what the Noah's Ark story is about. There's a treaty involved with Moors, as well as a treaty with other European nations. That's what you call your multilateral treaties. Then there's bilateral treaties with Moors directly with European powers, connotative, as well as multilateral treaties. That's the olive branch and the dove. Noah's Ark story, Abbotian maritime law, which is rotarian around the world. Let's continue. So now, let's look up the definition of hypothecation. Hypothecation, according to Black's Law Dictionary, 4th edition, is on page 877, and on the PDF version, it's 953. So we'll have the mothers read the definition of hypothecation, which is what we're gonna learn next. How did they get rid of the Moors? Well, first, they had to corrupt the bloodline under escheat. Then they had to break out a pen and put it on paper. So now, we're gonna figure out how they did it on paper, hypothecation. So the first word we're gonna read is hypothecate before we read hypothecation. So we have the mothers read hypothecate first, so we can get a basic understanding. So, we have the mothers read hypothecate first, so we can get a basic understanding.
Um, hypothecate, to pledge a thing without delivering the possession of it to the pledgi. The master went aboard and in the absence of the owner may hypothecate the ship, right, and cargo to raise money, uh, re- re- I'm sorry.
To raise, raise, to raise money.
Raise money.
Requisite.
Requisite for the compli- complish- completion of the voyage.
Okay, remember now when we looked up feudal law, escheat, and I told you about vessels. You got blood vessels, the body, you got vessels, i.e. ships. And now they said on the Abbotian maritime thing, law, everything is according to sea law, S-E-A law, water. Now, they talking about under the definition of hypothecate, talking about vessels, are you catching? What happened? They said in the absence of the owner, the property on the ship started to be sold. Started to be taken under possession. So, they tell you immediately on the definition of hypothecate, that the people who are selling it, it don't belong to them. It belongs to the owner. Who's the owner under this anthropomorphic story that we're reading on the definition hypothecation?
The colonists.
No, the Moors are the owners.
Okay.
The colonists who call themselves Americans now, because it's an applied term, look up definition of American, eighteen twenty-eight dictionary, Noah, Noah's Webster dictionary. Tells you exactly who the Americans are, even though the term American is a political term. So, in the definition of hypothecate, it says that the ship's cargo was used as collateral to sell it off, although it wasn't there to sell, the owner and his absence. What happened to the owner? He's dead, dead at what? Sea, he's dead through, he's perished, he died. So, therefore, someone else came in and made a claim, but never owned it. So, they're telling you right there, there on the hypothecate, property was sold that they never owned. Property was claimed under possession, but they didn't own it. That's why they tell you in law that possession is nine tenths of the law. Nine tenths instead of a hundred percent. What's happening, saying it's a ten percent chance, nine tenths, it's a ten percent chance, nine tenths of a chance, that the real owner will come back and make a claim. They're trying to say on the record, it's very little chance Moors will come back and make a claim.
Because the Moors are incompetent?
Cause the Moors incompetent and the Moors are dead on paper. So, therefore, under possession, nine tenths of the law, they get to continue their commerce and living off the estate of the Moors. And so, the Moors come back and make a claim. That's why when you read Article twenty-two on the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, seventeen eighty-six and eighteen, eighteen thirty-six, when they were renewed, was like uh, changes to Article twenty-five, but if you go back and look at Article twenty-two of the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, it tells you that when the Moore makes the claim, he makes the claim on a demand and it shall not be interrupted, be returned immediately, and who makes that decision? The consul, C-O-N-S-U-L, Consulor Court. Article twenty-two. We won't go over that right now, but that's another thing. So, let's get back to, go ahead, mother.
So. So, this whole time.
Yes, this whole time, go ahead.
They've been using the Bible, talking about the Moors, but the Moors haven't caught up on what they were talking about.
That's correct.
Talking about Noah's Ark, saying like a big flood happened, but not stating what really happened. Well, they are, but they're not stating what's happening on the left hand while, you know.
What they're doing on the right, it's a magic trick.
Yeah.
All magic tricks have a bunch of smoke to distract you, looking around while they're, boom, they do the trick, cause you're not watching this hand, you're watching this, smoke in this hand, the trick is over here.
So, then they say that the bloodline disappeared or the Moors disappeared, and like you stated, how, how you disappeared? By the pen.
By the pen.
And by the pens, telling them like, oh, you're not a Moore, you're just black, negro, African American. And then making people check the checkbox.
Subscribe to it by giving you a race box that says, pick one of these three or four options. But they always leave a loophole, it says other.
Yeah. And nobody questions what's the other.
Cause they don't know what other is, they don't know themselves, cause they suffer black people, quote unquote, that think they're black, suffer from what's called psychosis. Psychosis, a lack of reality of self. The clinical term is cognitive dissonance. A disconnection from reality of what the rest of the world knows true about you. That everybody has a nationality, but yet everyone in North America, connotative, think they're a crayon. Soon as you leave outside North America, i.e. Noah's Ark, the flood zone, you get back into the dry land, everybody else has a nationality. Everybody, the land is named after the people, people named after the land. You go to Mexico, you got Mexicans. You go to Brazil, Brazilians. You go to Italy, Italians. You come back to North America, everybody's black, brown, red, yellow, or white. But watch this. When Albians, i.e. people that black people call white people, when those white people, quote unquote, go over to Europe, they don't call themselves white. They call themselves by their national name when they go home. Also, they become so-called Spaniard again, Irish again, British again, Russian again, German again, Italian again, they get back to North America, they become white again. Why is that? It's a political status, it's a privileged status. They get it, denationalizes them and the black status denationalizes Moors. But the Moors don't know the game's being played, cause they're unconscious Moors who subscribe to checking the box black. So, they're still dead at sea. So, therefore, the colonists can still control your vast estate, cause you're dead by your own admission, checking boxes. Hypothecation is paperwork, they give you the paperwork. Uh, sign this right here on the race and mark a box, they test you. And you go right along with the fraud, cause you don't know yourself. But no worries, these people who call themselves black are starting to wake up slowly but surely to recognize that they do have a nationality, cause every human being on planet earth has a nationality. They come from a mother and that mother has a nationality. The first thing the colonists did is attack the mother and told her, you better not teach your children who they are. You're, tell your child his nationality is Toby. Got it? That's the password. That you've been colonized. Now that we finished understanding what hypothecate means based upon what's called anthropomorphic stories and what the colonists has done by taking possession of something that they don't own, now let's read the definition of hypothecation. If we have the mothers read for us, please.
Hypothecation, the term borrowed from the civil law. It's so far as it is naturalized in English and American law. It means a contract of, uh, mortage or pledge, pledge, in which the subject matter is not delivered into the possession of the pledgi or pani, or conversely. A conventional right existing in one person over sus- suspicious property of another, which consists in the power to cause a sale of the same thought it to be not in the possession in order that a suspicious claim of the creditors may be satisfied out of the proceeds.
Alright, let's start right there, let's take it from the top. So, hypothecation. Hypothecation means that when something is pledged, but yet they pledge something, i.e. the colonists is pledging what? Let's use an example, let's, let's use this house as an example. The colonists don't own the land. So, therefore, they're pledging to say, you can buy a house on this land. And the reality is the colonists don't have the sovereign power, capacity of corporal or incorporeal authority to sell anything on the land. So, therefore, they're not really selling it. They're hypothecating it by you thinking you just bought a house and you didn't buy nothing, cause what money did you give them for the house? You gave them no money. You go to a closing and they do what's called wire fund, you never even had any money in your head. You didn't give the, the closing company any money, you just signed a bunch of paperwork through a unilateral document and no one else signed, the closing, the bankers didn't sign it. You know why? Because the bankers don't own any property, but they got you thinking you own it. So, black people don't own property and white people don't own property. The only persons own people, I should say, that own property is Moore, cause they own the soil, the estate. So, therefore, what they're doing is, they're selling you a bill of goods that says, yeah, 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 we'll sell you this, but they don't own it. They possess it. And since they really technically don't possess it, they just gifted you something to make you think you own it and you really don't. Only Moors can own, everyone else can possess. So, through hypothecation, they got you in a belief status that you own something and you don't, under the definition of white or black. Or brown, or red, or yellow, as it relates to this land. If you're not a Moore, you don't own. Now, remember, we've been talking about vessels, vassals. So, you know it's on the hypothecation, they're right back to talking about cargo, vessels, property. Cause it's a theft of Noah's Ark story. They stealing from those who they deemed dead at sea. And selling off their property of the deceased, it's an estate sale. And who made the claim? There's an imposter came in and made the claim called the state, state of, all caps. Acting as the power returning while you're dead at sea or in a coma, psychosis. Are you seeing that now?
Oh, yeah.
Let's continue the reading, mothers.
The, the term is frequently used in our textbooks and reports, particularly upon the law of botany and maritime. Uh, maritime liens, thus a vessel is said to be hypothecated for the demand of the one who, who has advanced money for supplies.
So, stop right there, see, talking about vessels again. See how the common denominator is about a vessel? What type of vessel? Blood vessel, i.e. pedigree, i.e. nationality. They denationalize the Moors by making them take on the brand system, the caste system of being black, negro, African American colored, et cetera. They saying your blood vessel stopped. They corrupted the bloodline by getting you to subscribe and consent or through even your tacit acquiescence to subscribe to be something that you're not affiliated to a contract. That contract, the Treaty of Peace and Friendship between United States of America citizens and Moors. Any other name outside of that is working outside of the contract, it's all about contracts. And those contracts are tied back to the land through a trust. So, Moors have been working outside the contract, i.e. sinning. But you have to understand the definition of sin really means ignorance. So, they say you're born into sin, you're born into ignorance. That's what sin means.
Off the mark.
You're born into ignorance. That's why I say everybody's born into sin. You're born into ignorance. Cause you think Santa Claus is real. And like Toshary Bay says, and you think bunny rabbits will lay chicken eggs. These stories are for children. But yet adults who call themselves adult, just because they turn eighteen, think they're an adult, they still have a mindset of a minority. Minority means minor authority, it's a compound word. Minor authority, minor authority of what? Their pineal gland, you're thinking, you think that Santa Claus is real, cause you think you're black, same thing. Saying you saying yourself is black is like saying Santa Claus is real, cause you suffer from psychosis. You think you're Toby, but you go back and find out, you do the real history, the Moore is synonymous to Kuntikinte. That is the proper appellation, not the nom de guerre Toby. So, on the hypothecation, they got us writing our names down with colonists' last names. Smith, Jones, and Johnson, as Toshary Bay says. Instead of Kuntikinte, i.e. Eel, Bay, Ali, Day, and Owl. Cause the feud is with who? The Owls. Feudal law, the feud is with the Owls. The feud ain't with black people, black people keep arguing, black lives matter. The colonists like, they love it. Cause the feud is not with the black lives, cause ain't no black people on planet earth. The feud is with the Moors, the Owls, who think they're black. So, they think all this time is racism, it's not racism. It's not racism whatsoever. It's what you call Secret Treaty of Verona to overthrow the Moors estate. It's called Uno Sanctum Policies to overthrow the Moors estate. It's called Christian Black Coles of seventeen twenty-four to do what? Overthrow the Moors estate, e-state, not state, e-state, estate. And the state of, all caps, is making the claim as a trustee, cause you're dead on paper and you consent to it by checking the box black. And saying black lives matter, they saying, they printing up the t-shirts, talking about colonists that you call white people, printing up t-shirts, making millions of dollars off black people, quote unquote.
So, this whole time, this whole time, they're using black lives matter, if they're just cheering. They're just cheering, um, basically they're making fun of the Moors for them calling themselves black, because black doesn't even exist.
Yes, what's the reference point? Look up the definition of black in an American standard dictionary. Soon as you look up the definition of black, which is an adjective, that's the matrix etymology, matrix adjective. It says right under adjective, I believe it's adjective, but it could be noun. It said, is the humor, the despair of these people call themselves black, what does that mean? They laugh at us.
Right in your face.
It says right there, the humor in the definition, the line of entry of black, humor of the despair of these people who go on this brand of black, that's an adjective, they lie, they laugh in your face, because they like, look at these fools who've been fooled through hypothecation and escheat to call themselves something and we train them just like a rodent, just like an animal. That's why if you look at the definition of human versus human being, human is listed as an adjective. Human being is listed as a noun. Well, if you look at the definition of human as an adjective, that's black people. Why? Because they saying you one level above an animal. You can talk and walk, but you can't think and use your brain and you don't read. If you look up the definition of human being, a noun, look up that definition, you know what it says? One who has articulate speech. Superior mental development, superior mental development and an upright stance. Superior mental development, articulate speech, and upright stance, that's a noun. What does it mean? That you're using your pineal gland, the third eye, to think. That's why they put that eye in the middle of the pyramid on the one so-called dollar. The eye, it's right here, which is your brain. And right now, it's capsified, it's, it's got this. And right now, it's classified, it's, it's got this shield over it, it can't see. So therefore, right now, blacks think they're blacks. Cause they think Santa Claus is real. Just like they think Jesus' name is Jesus, his name ain't Jesus, his mother named him Yeshua with a Y. But if you tell them Jesus' name is Yeshua, they'd be like, no, it ain't. That's because they're black. Suffer from psychosis, cognitive dissonance. Let's continue with the reading.
Oh, sorry. In the, in the common law, there are but few, if any cases of hypothecation. In the strict sense of the civil law, that is a pledge without possession by the pledgeee. The nearest approaches perhaps are cases of botany, bonds, and claims of material, material men and of seamen for wages. But these are liens and privileges rather than hypothecations.
So what's happening? Immediately, you find out in common law, hypothecation rarely happens. Now you can understand the law and history of common law. Common law represents the mothers, the ancient archaic way things used to get done. Not this hypothecation and cheat. Mothers create life. Patriarchs take life on paper and through wars. So in the common law, it means the mother, the womb. The common law, which means the common denominator of law amongst women. Understand the word law is an acronym for land, air, and water. You control both mother earth and you being a vessel under Amortia Maritime Law, blood vessel. Cause you, for your blood, you create the child. The child carries the blood. The father carries the surname. Yeah, he makes his donation with his DNA, but the mother carries the blood. That's why each child that comes out of the womb already has its immunity and don't need vaccine shots. Because you've given them everything that's already in you. When the child comes out the womb, it might immediately goes to the breast to get the rest of the nutrients. Which is more immunities. So when they tell your child, hit a thousand shots, it's a damn lie. That child's already born with everything you got. Cause it's cut from the same cloth, literally. That's why they talking about vessels again. Blood vessel, blood, they corrupted the blood. What blood? The mother's blood of the child. Cause the child grew up thinking the child was black. Cause you were threatened that, that colonists gonna kill your child. So you said, timeout. Okay, I'll tell him his name is Toby. Just don't kill him. I'll tell him his name is Toby, i.e. black, negro, African-American colored, minority, et cetera. Whales and et cetera, Baptist, Methodist, Catholic, these are all brands to claim property. Your property under these brands, your cargo under a vessel, vessel cargo on the ship. What ship? The ship of the state, the state is one big giant cruiser. With all these people on it, they're claiming as property cargo. Your child is cargo to them, property. All under a cheat to corrupt the bloodline and hypothecation and ink pen to pledge something that they don't own. They don't own your child, you own your child. They possess your child through an ink pen called probate court, called orphan's court through the hospital. The hospital is complicit in the crime through the birth certificate. That way you pledge your child to the state. The state adopts your child, cause they're claiming that you say you black. Ain't no black people on planet earth, so your child was born an alien. Cause it has no pedigree. There ain't no such thing as black people on planet earth. So your child was born with no nationality. So the state, all caps, adopts it and puts it into the war. What war? You go to places like Texas right now, they say, I stay in fifth war, they all proud. The war, you become a ward of the state when you don't have a parent, cause your parents dead. Cause something happened with its cheat, the bloodline got corrupted. Because you took on a last name, Smith, Johnson, et cetera. And then went on the brand of black, negro, colored, African-American, and Baptist. Everything's Amortia Maritime Law. And Noah, i.e. the colonists, is ruling. Everybody else is dead, except for those that's a bird of a feather. Noah's family is who? They're the colonists. Who are overthrowing the Moor's estate. So anyone who subscribes to being a colonist, i.e. white, American, and anything other than what they are, they just, they don't realize they're already under tacit acquiescence agreeing to overthrow the Moors. Black people are agreeing to overthrow the Moors, cause you're overthrowing your own bloodline, you're a sellout. You stabbing your own family in the back, don't even know it. Black people join the Marines, the Army, the Navy, the Air Force, the National Guard, just go around the world attacking their own brothers and sisters, cause they think they black. So they don't connect to who's a Moor, who's Egyptian, who's from Honduras, who's from Mexico. They just going around killing people, helping the colonists keep their power. Cause they don't know who the hell they are. They just looking for a paycheck. They're trading commerce to be a militia on behalf of the colonists. Let me say this for the record. The colonists have never won a war without a Moor. The Moors have always helped them to overthrow everybody's republic. Even when the Moors lost in fourteen ninety-two, there was Moors on the other side who helped to overthrow of the Moors, the sellout Moors did that. Sellout Moors helped Christopher Columbus get over here to the continent. So you must understand, the Moors have bad history and good history, they go together. It's called hex album. So therefore, like Noah Jew Ali did, he asked to picture the illustration of the mother unconscious and she's pregnant with humanity written on her womb. Meaning the mother's unconscious, she suffers from psychosis, cognitive dissonance, she's in a coma. Cause she's forgotten about self, but yes, she's pregnant, still giving birth. And that child's gonna come out and get devoured. Child gonna come out being Toby, a slave. Not knowing himself. Okay, is that the end of the reading of hypothecation?
Yes.
Excellent. So, in terms of any questions about what we've learned thus far, do you have any questions? Or comments? So the viewers who watching this can also get an understanding of what the mothers are thinking about what's been presented with reference points.
I have both. It's basically, I'm just re-elaborating on what you said, just to verify in my brain again. So you're saying the colonists, well, the colonists did attack the mother first because the mother obviously loves her son to death.
That's correct.
And doesn't want nothing bad to happen. So the mother had to surrender and say, okay, okay. That's like me saying Messiah, now your name is James, right?
Ah, nope.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, so that's like me telling him, now your name is James and brainwashing him throughout. Yeah, so he can live.
Correct.
So, um, so Messiah, the original name that I named my son, basically became dead because on via pen, because now I signed it over and said James.
Correct.
So, that's just terrible how they did that.
Yeah.
Well, well thought though, but terrible.
Yes, keep in mind, sellout Moors helped them, helped the colonists to do this. Cause the sellout Moors took a payoff. Colonists can't beat Moors straight up. Colonists need a Moor to help them to push their agenda. So you can't blame this one hundred percent on colonists. Sellout Moors continue to this very day. You're talking about your pastors, your House of Representatives, your senators, your presidents, your actors.
Your athletes.
And your athletes. Anyone who has this knowledge is helping the colonists to maintain power, because most people with that type of knowledge have a high income. A good paying job. And they got a pension plan coming. Or they're not paying taxes whatsoever, because they got a five oh one C three through a IRS kickback to stay quiet about the fact who's Moor. So look at the, let me give you an example. Martin Luther King ran on civil rights. Where did Martin Luther King come from? A family of what?
Ministers.
Ministers, five oh one C three. Martin Luther, Martin Luther King was groomed to take on this fight to keep people black, negro, colored. Malcolm X was going around telling everybody it was black, then he found out the truth. Then he got assassinated when he found out that we had a nationality called Moors. He was gonna go to the UN and, and fight in the UN. He said it on the record. All of a sudden he gets assassinated. Well, wait a minute, where did he get his start? A church, i.e. a mosque, i.e. a temple.
Over across the way.
He got his start from the Nation of Islam. Farad Mohammed, Elijah Mohammed, with a mosque, five oh one C three. To tell these people they're black, black power. And through the power of the press, what's the press? The media, the music, James Brown, I'm black and I'm proud. The Pope said, and secret treaty of Verona said that the press was the most powerful weapon ever. What is the press? That means the pressing of the typewriter or the pressing of the pen or the pressing of the feather up against paper. So what's the biggest press right now? Rappers. Media, CNN, Fox, CBS, et cetera. Netflix, you turn on Netflix right now, black lives not everywhere. And what the hell is that all about? They're pushing that brand black.
Big time.
So the press is working overtime, i.e. the colonists is funding these people who suffer from psychosis to keep pushing that black thing. Cause they know the Moors are fighting back, so they gotta triple down, not double down, triple down with the press to push their word black. That's what you call counterintelligence. The intelligence of Moors is being countered by the colonists, but the colonists are using unconscious Moors to fight the Moors. Cause I'm black and I'm proud ain't being said by colonists. Colonists are using unconscious Moors to use as a counterintelligence to true intelligence. Cause these people think they black, think they're highly intelligent, which they are. They just suffer from cognitive dissonance. Which makes them dead in the eyes of the law, civil liter mortus. Civil liter mortus, which means dead in the eyes of the law, but they don't know that. Cause there ain't no such thing as black people. So they're using Moors to fight Moors. Continue with your question, Akon.
So the five oh one C three, that's, that's the churches, the mosque, et cetera.
Mm-hmm, synagogues.
Synagogues. And they used, and that's Martin Luther King, he comes from a minister of all his, his family members.
That's right.
Ministers. So that five oh one C three is funded by the government.
It's not necessarily funded by the government, cause there is no government, number one, cause the United States is a corporation.
True.
However, the Federal Reserve, which is a private foreign corporation and international bank, they ain't got nothing to do with government. It's an international bank. That allows bishops, cardinals, priests, pastors, ministers to use through their profit law statement that they have to disclose their earnings they got, but they don't have to pay no taxes. But they have to disclose through the five oh one C three form that they are operating as a business earning revenue, but they don't have to pay no taxes whatsoever on that income, as long as they're saying it's going to take care of the business of the church. That's why the pastor can got a big giant Cadillac and a big old jet, because it's all coming through the five oh one C three, cause they ain't paying taxes. They get to keep it one hundred percent.
So then they have the people, literally the people that's in the congregation pay out of their pocket, thinking that they're learning something, when actually the priest eh, or whoever's holding the mosque.
Synagogue.
Synagogue, um, to dummy down the people and just keep them hushed.
So the chattel, which is these people who think they're black, their chattel. Chatter is a compound word for Christian cattle, chattel. That's a legal term. Are the bill payers on behalf of these people who have titles over the church, mosque, synagogue, et cetera. So therefore, they already know that their chattel, i.e. their conjugation, already gotta pay federal tax, state tax. They gotta pay into the FICA, which is your social security and Medicaid. They got all this taxation, 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 and then the church say, you gotta pay ten percent times. Robbing the widow's pennies.
I will never, ever, ever in my life step foot in church again.
Well, you gotta understand, the church is not the problem.
No, I know, but now I know.
The church problem is the administrators of the church. Because they're not teaching spirituality. They're not teaching religion, they're teaching dogma. That's why in the Wizard of Oz, in the end, the dog pulled back the curtain to expose the fraud. The dog, which is God spelled backwards, the dog exposed it. That Oz wasn't real. That's the Moors. The Moors are gonna expose everything, they're pulling back the curtain. That's why the United States, not to be confused, the United States of America continues to throw dirt on the Moors to try to slander them. To say that they're domestic terrorists. But you must understand the definition of domestic terrorist means they're citizens who are trying to overthrow their own government. Well, number one, there is no government. Number two, Moors are not citizens of the United States of America or citizens of the U dot S dot or the US that has no dots. They're a foreign nationals. They're Moors, descendants of Moroccans, i.e. Morbites Canaanites. Never were United States citizens or United States citizens of America. So therefore, don't blame it on the church. Don't blame it on the conjugation, their chattel, psychosis. It's the administrators. And where did the administrators learn this from? The secret societies that tell them to keep pushing this black thing. I.e. the Vatican, the UK District of Columbia. Understand District of Columbia is a ten mile square in Washington DC. I.e. the Federal Reserve, private corporation giving them kickbacks to keep pushing this black thing. And whatever new name they come up with, cause you gotta understand African-American wasn't brought into the language until the year almost nineteen eighty-eight by Jesse Jackson, who's a minister.
He was also the one that was standing right by Martin Luther King, when Martin Luther King found out the truth.
Imagine that.
And he was the only one, or he lived and Martin Luther King died.
Yeah. So there's nothing wrong with religion, cause people ain't been given religion in the first place, it's the administrators. Keeping the secret. For the bill payers, chateau, keep paying their tithing, so the pastor, minister. Bishops, cardinals, the Jesuits can all get paid off their bill payers. The chateau, sheeple, sheeple. The flock. The shepherds getting the money. The flock is the food. So when they say rich people are born with a silver spoon in their mouth. They're trying to tell you something. If it's a silver spoon, what's a silver spoon? Well, first thing first, silver represents the real money. Gold and silver coin. The spoon represents they're eating something, what are they eating? They're eating out of the soup, the virtues of their bill payers, so the bill payers are eating off of your virtues, ie your psychosis, your cognitive dissonance. And your so-called, I'm saved. Position. You ain't saved, you're fooled. Cause the rich are eating off your ignorance. That's why they say the two percent are rich. Ninety-eight percent of people are just barely making ends meet. Cause the two percent are eating good with that silver spoon, because they got the real money. And they got the knowledge. The rest of the people are the fool. Fool and fool, F O O L, so they've been fooled. By the magi, the magician who is the judges. The judges are all complicit with the attorneys, lawyers, and barristers. And all of them are complicit with your senators, House of Representatives, and executive branch. Of every so-called government of the State of the Union, as well as the president of the so-called United States of America, not to be misunderstood, the U dot S dot.
So when the, um. The Treaty of Peace and Friendship with Morocco.
Mm-hmm.
Was signed and the, well, part of the letter. I, I don't know it verbatim, but part of the letter was, we have, we are, we are a poor country. They're talking about the United States.
Correct, George Washington better, to CD Muhammad, in the year seventeen eighty-nine.
Right, he said that, um, and we have not expanded enough to get to have enough money.
Mm-hmm.
The silver and gold.
Correct.
So basically, they hadn't stolen enough.
Correct.
To really pay the rent.
That is correct.
So they, the, the westward expansion was to get that gold.
That's correct.
Silver. Platinum, whatever it was. But they were getting it from us, they were stealing it from us.
They're stealing Moors gold and putting their own mint on it. So therefore, that's hypothecation, which means they're pledging a thing, ie money or Federal Reserve notes that really isn't theirs.
Exactly.
The gold belongs to the Moors, cause it was harvested. Exported out of Moors land. Over to London, UK, et cetera. They took it right out of our land and put it in their safes for safekeeping. And gave us private commercial paper called a Federal Reserve note. Mm-hmm. It means absolutely nothing. It has no intrinsic value whatsoever unless you're trading it with someone who thinks it's real. It's just like going to a casino, soon you walk into a casino, you must pledge something, which is this Federal Reserve note in order to get those chips.
The money.
Then you start playing with those chips, poker chips, as if they're real, and they're not real. Well, a Federal Reserve note is no different, that piece of paper they call a dollar, what's the collateral for that? The gold and silver that makes the so-called Federal Reserve note have some type of enforcement. But guess what? The gold don't belong to the colonists, so therefore they couldn't print no paper to support some gold that never belonged to them. So therefore, you look in the writings of indigenous people. That was fully ratified in the year two thousand seven by the United Nations, then Barack H Obama cited into the United States corporations. Law in twenty-ten. And it says that the land and its resource go back to the indigenous people, that means the gold. Colonists are absolutely broke, they always have been, always will be, cause they ain't got no gold. So therefore, they have to now slander the Moors, because the Moors are coming after gold and the land. If you take the colonists, what they consider to be their gold and silver and land, what do they have left?
Nothing.
Nothing. So they're gonna fight to keep what's not theirs, they possess it, and I intend to the law, but they don't own it, cause when the Moors make the claim. That's the ultimate claim, that's Article twenty-two of the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. By our will. We make the demand through consulate court. And get back our land and resources on behalf of the mothers. So AMPAC as of right now, has a lodeo land claim on our latitude, longitude. Formerly known as the State of Colorado, all caps, which is a private corporation that never had ownership of the land. Never even really had possession. Because the real owner was in a coma. They're just living off of. Of your trust. Because you trusted them. That's why they put on all that Federal Reserve notes, in God, we trust. But who's God? It's an acronym for Government Ordinance Department. They trust because they're living off the Moors' trust. So the government connotative for the colonists is living off the Moors' trust. As ulfers, ie trustees and managers, because we've been written off as dead and seated.
Say that acronym one more time.
So God is an acronym on the Federal Reserve note for Government Ordinance Department. Cause they got all their departments, the alphabet boards.
And is that here or is that in London?
That's around the world.
Okay.
So the colors aren't just doing it here in Northwest America, commonly known as North America, that's the same playbook they use around the world to colonize the world, cause there's no one's art. Over in Africa, all fifty-four countries have claimed their independence, why? Because they already knew their nationality, they were just trying to get the colonists out. Here in North America, these people still think they're black, so they'll never get the colonists out, cause they don't even think this is their land. While simultaneously, ain't none one of them fighting to get back to Africa. Instead, they're building churches. While the colonists is building prisons.
You know, I always wondered, why does it, why is there so many churches out here?
Hmm.
I always wondered, but I just never understood, and not just one church, it could be like a Baptist church over here, uh. Whatever church right across the street.
All types of dominations.
Yeah.
And I never understood why, but that makes sense now, that is why.
Yes. But what you just said is not a, a negative about the church and the people, cause they don't know what they don't know.
Yeah.
So they're innocent, but yet ignorance of the law is no excuse. You're an outlaw, even if you don't know it. Outlaw what? Outlaw the contract of Treaty of Peace and Friendship. Outlaw what? Your nationality, cause you're dishonoring your mother when you call yourself Toby, or you call yourself black, negro, African American, or minority. You don't know your nationality, you're dishonoring your mother. And your mother's mother's mother. So therefore, the congregation don't really know, they actually wanna get saved and so they can float up to some cloud. When they don't realize it, that right here, mother's already God, you're the true entity. You give life and your sons out there taking lives.
We forgive them because they forgot they were God.
Mm-hmm. So you're born into sin. Because of lack of knowledge itself. But you know everything about somebody floating on the sky, or somebody just deep down in the core of the earth, but you can't even tell me who the hell you are. Based upon your nationality, I asked a brother one day, hey man, where you from? I'm from Detroit. No, no, I mean, what's your nationality? Uh, I'm from Detroit. No, no, what's your pedigree? Oh, oh man, uh, uh, I'm American. America's a continent, what's your nationality based upon the landmass come from your pedigree? Huh? That's how he looking at me. He's black. He has to take on the definition of black, why? Cause he don't have a nationality, watch this. When the British came over to the land to conquer the Moors land. They no longer wanted to be referred to as British anymore. That's why they were trying to get from under the bosom of the British crown, when they came over to the continent of Northwest America, looking for asylum. And refuge, they were the first refugees, they were the first immigrants with an I. Who eventually became an immigrant with an E, cause they were looking for permanent residence. Then eventually they become ex-patriots of Great Britain, meaning they want to denounce their nationality. Well, if they didn't wanna be called British no more, what was it gonna be called? Cause they needed a name, they created an army here, it's called. Colonists, feudalists. Pilgrims, settlers, and eventually they start calling themselves white and then American. Everything but British. So if they call themselves white, they gotta immediately get you to play along in the game, you must be black, if I'm white, oh, that makes sense. Oh, the name of Americans are red, yeah, let's keep the crayon game going, oh, the Asians come over here, they young. And then, and, and Jose, when he come from Mexico, he's brown, yeah, can't all those crayons just get along? People have nationalities, and the British. Nationality came over here looking for refuge, no longer wanted to be connected to the British crown, so the British told them, look here, you don't wanna be British, you better change your damn name. Or we gonna tax the hell out of you until you do. We'll keep bombing you until you do, cause you guys are treasonous, run away from the house like that, claiming you ain't British no more, that's treasonous. That's why they kept coming over here fighting them. Treasonous. Y'all ain't Americans, y'all ain't white, you're British. Wait a minute, you can't blame these twentieth century and twenty-first century. People who think they white. Cause they honestly think they're white, cause they suffer from psychosis and cognitive dissonance as well. Cause they've been told by their overseers at their. Churches that they're white. The sand man, mandate is for everyone. So they think they're white. You can't blame them for that, they think they own the land, why? Cause they've been indoctrinated to think that they own everything, and they do not. But their overseers know already that these people think they're white, don't own nothing. Cause they're white, and ain't no such thing as white people, which means you disappeared on paper too, hypothecation. Ain't no such thing as white people. Go ahead, mother.
So. What wars, what bombings are you talking about? Are you talking about?
So when the British kept coming over here fighting.
Eight, eh, the war of Spanish-American War, eight, eighteen twelve.
All the wars.
And the civil war.
All the wars of civil wars. One hundred percent are civil wars amongst colonists to colonists. Today, they still fighting, it's called the Democratic and Republican Party Civil War. They've always been fighting each other. Civil War been going on for a long time amongst themselves, that's why they went into what they call the Dark Ages of the Renaissance in Europe. Fighting each other. They lost their power, too busy fighting, they all went broke fighting. Then the Moors came in in seventy-eleven and brought light back into the darkness. Got ready to play. Taught algebra, science, history.
Like the Hundred Years' War, the Thirty Years' War.
All of them.
All of the, the Brit, Civil War in Britain or?
All of those are colonies on colonies war, ie like they say, black on black crime, that's white on white crime, connotative.
Yeah.
What are they fighting on? Moors land.
Moors land.
Cause the original Europeans are all Moors.
Yeah.
So that's why they said, um. We have two presidents now.
They say that. But it's irrelevant, cause ain't no such thing. As a president, because there is no public government. There's a president of a corporation, so if they say there's two presidents, they saying it's one of the republic for which it stands. Of seventeen eighty-nine organic constitution. That was overthrown in eighteen sixty-five and it killed Lincoln, so they saying that Trump was the next president, lawful president after Lincoln. And all other presidents since eighteen sixty-five been unlawful presidents, cause they've been presidents under a corporation. On the record. So Trump is saying, hey man, I'm leaving right off from Lincoln, I was the next president under republic, Article four, section four of their constitution of seventeen eighty-nine. So now Biden now is the president of the United States Corporation, not to be confused, the United States of America, which is the true party of the treaty. So Lincoln was a party of the true Treaty of Peace and Friendship, cause he was still operating in the United States of America.
And also Lincoln was the one.
And Lincoln had Moors blood. That's why they call them Lincoln Africans. They mocked him.
But that's why he, he knew about that, the Moors land and won that case. Whatever.
William Dungy versus Joseph Spencer.
Exactly.
Of eighteen fifty-seven. Just before he became president of the United States of America. In eighteen sixty, eighteen sixty-one.
So since, uh, it's a corporation that Biden is a president of. He, that's why he, they can get away with stacking, putting him up there as a clone, putting that clone up there.
Well, that's, what you're saying is correct. However, what's most relevant? The parties must be known, and we must know what the parties did. And the parties instated the Moors through hypothecation.
Yeah.
And that's how the Moors lost their land with a pen. We'll end it there.